Welcome to the September 30th, 2025 regular session, which is our 22nd voting session of the Mayor and City Council of Hagerstown. The meeting is now called to order. I would like to invite my friend Les McIntosh up for the invocation. If everybody could stand, please.
Every head bowed. To Father God, the Creator of heaven and earth, we humbly come here today in search of wisdom for the way, for purity and purpose of our path, for strength to sustain, to curse to confront, correct while continuing to maintain a mature level of civility in the midst of controversy and adversity. We ask that you protect this city, preserve the sanctity of this body, staff, and administration, as the weight of their vote within outweighs the vices without. We ask God that you protect this city, preserve the sanctity of this body, staff, and administration, as the weight of prudence and policy for the people outweighs the pressure of political posturing against the people. I pray the hands of the mayor be lifted up in strength. The city council members remain steadfast and resolve. The posters of the administrators sober sound and cementing in such a confidence that will propel tonight's session and sessions to come, that each one individually will collectively stand and yet represent each issue, each ordinance, each vote with such a confidence and assurance, and resolve the responsibilities of being elected official that it shall outweigh and silence every attempt to hinder their governing authority. So I invoke your throne of grace, and we invite you to be the judge, the jury, the ruler and revealer of all things, and bring peace to this city as we continue to posture to make Hagerstown a city of safety, diversity, and prosperity. In this, I pray in the name of my Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Let it all say amen.
Amen.
You may stand to pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, one home, and to the people.
Thank you. Pastor Mac, thank you. All right. First up is our announcements. Rules, procedure effective December 17th, 2024. Use of cell phones during meetings is restricted. All correspondence for distribution to elected officials should be provided to the city clerk and should include a copy for city clerk for inclusion in the official record. Meetings get our October meeting schedules. October 7th, 2025 was a work session at 4:00 PM. October 14th, 2025, no meeting is scheduled. October 21st, 2025, work session at 4:00 PM. And October 28th, 2025, the regular session at 7:00 PM. Next up, I'd like to have a motion for appointment to the Board of Traffic and Parking.
Mr. Mayor, we move to appoint Gordon Poffenberger to the Board of Traffic and Parking with the term to expire on September 30th, 2029.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next up, we have a proclamation and two special recognitions. I'd like to have Councilwoman Anderson come up with me on African Heritage Month.
Can I have everybody up that's from the African community? If you're here present in the audience today?
Okay, so really quickly, I just wanted to share a fun fact with the audience. In 1833, 19 people from Frederick and Washington County embarked from Liberia. And this is just a vivid reminder that Hagerstown history reaches across the Atlantic and that the hopes and hard choices and the courage of our ancestors helped shape the communities on both sides of the ocean. That was just one fun fact that I want to share with you guys. And as far as this evening goes, it is an honor to join you as we celebrate African Heritage Month here in Hagerstown. This celebration is about more than history. It is about recognizing the strength, the beauty, and the contributions of the American people, the African-American people, that that the culture continues to shape our city and our world. For me, it's more of a personal connection. My roots run deep in Côte d'Ivoire. So if you speak French, you guys know that's also known as Ivory Coast. I carry that pride and heritage with me deeply. So to see Hagerstown embrace African heritage reminds me that whether our story begins here or across the other side of the ocean, together we enrich the fabric of this community that we all call home. This month calls for us to honor the past, celebrate the present, and build a future grounded in unity, respect, and inclusion. Our diversity is our strength, and tonight we stand as one in a community, as one. Thank you and happy African Heritage Month.
So on behalf of the Mayor and City Council.
2025 is African Heritage Month, and I would love for these folks to take their time and share with you what they do in the community as far as their business or on the personal level. So let's start with Sabina Jules.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Sabina Jules. I'm a new member of the city of Hagerstown. I started off in Frederick.
Just down.
But I've landed in Hagerstown where I feel at home. And the city has been especially gracious and helpful to me. And I did talk a little bit to the mayor in the background to say, thank you. Thank you, Hagerstown, for lifting up an African lady to bring healthy, tasty food to the city of Hagerstown. And I also am going to be teaching a class at Hagerstown Community College if they do have enrollment, because my goal is to make sure that when people know better, they do better. Our black community is suffering from diabetes, high blood pressure, lupus, all kinds of illnesses, and it can be traced back to what we eat. So my my goal is to make sure I can help one person at a time. And I'll be doing it right from my restaurant, not only serving but educating and let people know that if you are sick of certain things, when you come to the restaurant, don't eat what you heard your friends talking about. Listen to me, and I can help you heal your body.
Is your nutrition?
Yes.
Hello, everyone. My name is Abigail Owusuansah. I'm the leader for the Ghanaian community in Hagerstown and the African community network. So last year, the mayor, the former mayor, accepted us here, direct us and educate us. So we organize a youth program every year for the youth. This year, we did it at the chambers with the help of the city police. They came in to educate the youths. All right. The mayor was there with us all day. And we organize community picnics. We have a platform that we promote African business. Every day, we go around to video them, ask them their reasons, their purpose, promote their businesses. And then we have a youth program that we supply the kids who needs help with food, school, bags, and everything. We update our community with every information in the community as well. And I'm hoping that the community will help us do more and more. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jacob is saying too many to less. So, yeah, I want to take this moment to thank, thank you for inviting us and thank Ms. Anne. Not seen in a while, but she's done a lot of her, she's helped us a lot around. I am Delise Minang, and I'm co-founder and team lead coordinator for the new Catholic High School that just started in town, Chesterton Academy of the Divine Family. Thank you, Pastor Mac, for giving us a place to start. So I have to share from a personal experience that Hagerstown welcomed us about 17 years ago and has just provided us the platform to grow. We started a business, Jacob will tell you guys about that. But I think from that platform, it took us to where we thought it was time to start giving back. And we're giving back in several ways, including now starting the Chesterton Academy of the Divine Family. It is for everyone, not just Catholics. So if you have a high school student, please send them away. This year, we started with ninth and 10th grade. We'll grow every year by adding another grade. So we're looking forward to impacting the young ones in the community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Anderson, and everybody else. So we've been in Hagerstown 18 years now. And as Delise said, we discovered it was a huge blessing selecting a very small town in America to start your life in. It's been a huge blessing. We started our business in this town, Optimize Healthcare, providing services for people with developmental disability. And now we serve the entire state or 23 counties. And so we used to have an office downtown just across from the mayor's office, like 10 walk, 10 footsteps from here. But now we moved the office to around the Meritus Center on Robinwood Drive. And as Delise mentioned to you, we also opened a high school this year, more of a way to really give back to the community. We have my mother-in-law here, and I'm only saying mother-in-law because I'm speaking English. But in our culture, we don't have mother-in-law. We have mothers. So I have my mother here, and she also opened a restaurant, and she does similar what my sister here is doing, trying to introduce the African cuisine and African taste spots in the community.
Good evening, everyone. Elizabeth is my name. And as Jacob said, we run an online frozen food restaurant, elismails.com. It started at Robinwood, Robinwood, near the hospital area. But because COVID closed us down, we went frozen online. And if you order here in Hagerstown, we can drive it to you, or it is delivered next day. And it is really delicious African food. And I must say, when we started the restaurant, I thought I would see many more African Americans. But guess who was there? A lot of everybody in the community, and they enjoyed the food. So we are still there, but frozen food online. You're welcome.
Hello, everyone. Good evening. I'm Tabita Minang from Cameroon. As you must have heard from family, Delise and Jacob, they've been in this town for 18 years and doing a lot for the community. So I said, let me come and see what they have been doing for 18 years. That's why I'm here. Thank you.
The Riza is my name. I just came in. So this is my family. I have to follow them and see what they are doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Eric's ears for the picture.
Come on this way.
And so we used to have an office downtown just across from the mayor's office, like 10 walk, 10 footsteps from here. But now we moved the office to around the Meritus Center on Robinwood Drive. And as Delise mentioned to you, we also opened a high school this year, more of a way to really give back to the community. We have my mother-in-law here, and I'm only saying mother-in-law because I'm speaking English. But in our culture, we don't have mother-in-law. We have mothers. So I have my mother here, and she also opened a restaurant, and she does similar what my sister here is doing, trying to introduce the African cuisine and African taste spots in the community.
Good evening, everyone. Elizabeth is my name. And as Jacob said, we run an online frozen food restaurant, elismeals.com. It started at Robinwood, Robinwood, near the hospital area. But because COVID closed us down, we went frozen online. And if you order here in Hagerstown, we can drive it to you, or it is delivered next day. And it is really delicious African food. And I must say, when we started the restaurant, I thought I would see many more African Americans. But guess who was there? A lot of everybody in the community, and they enjoyed the food. So we are still there, but frozen food online. You're welcome.
Hello, everyone. Good evening. I'm Tabita Minang from Cameroon. As you must have heard from family, Delise and Jacob, they've been in this town for 18 years and doing a lot for the community. So I said, let me come and see what they have been doing for 18 years. That's why I'm here. Thank you.
The Riza is my name. I just came in. So this is my family. I have to follow them and see what they are doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
You want some in front, Eric? Do you want anybody in front or like?
I think we all go up one more step.
Okay, I have a couple of special recognitions. First one is Jess Givens and Jake Blackman. I know these two a good bit because I actually love them for a beer every now and then. And they're Hub City Brewery. And we, my friends and I come over and pick up their dark horse every day. Yeah, I know. Hagerstown Mayor William McIntyre and City Council members would like to recognize Jess Givens and Jake Blackman for hosting the 2025 Farmers Market at Hub City Brewery, the former home of the city's historic farmers market since 1928. Your efforts have created a vibrant space that supports local growers, artisans, and small businesses while fostering a strong sense of community. Through your hard work and passion, you have brought back a cherished gathering place for residents and visitors alike, reviving a tradition that has been around for over 230 years.
Hi, everybody. So we're from Hub City Brewery. If you haven't been, we're in the old historic city farmer's market building. So, you know, being in such a beautiful building downtown, we obviously wanted to keep the tradition along and host the the city farmer's market again there. So we're honored to be a part of that history. Thanks.
All right, we have one more. And that is Sean and Mike Bauer. Hagerstown Mayor William McIntyre and City Council members would like to recognize Sean and Mike Bauer from Good News Hagerstown for their outstanding care and attention to the planners along Franklin Street and in downtown Hagerstown. The countless hours of watering, pruning, and nurturing have not only added vibrant color and life to downtown, but has also lifted the spirit of our community. Your generous heart and help has created spaces that are not only beautiful but welcoming to passerby. We extend our heartfelt gratitude and sincere appreciation for the outstanding care of these planners. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let me save the vertigo this way.
I can go over here a little bit.
Yeah, so I did the lower back there. There we go. Good smiles. One, two, three. Yes. Okay, thank you.
Okay, next up, general item, citizen comments. Citizen comments on agenda items shall be limited to topics listed for consideration on this agenda and limited to three minutes. We do not have anybody signed up. Do we have any emails?
You could ask the audience, everybody has.
Okay, anybody, if anybody in the audience that would like to speak on an agenda item, ask for anything on the on today's agenda. That more than likely, I'll probably fall under citizen comments.
Is it an item that's on the agenda today? Okay, just a general comment, period.
Yeah. Okay, to our motions. First up, first motion is approval of minutes.
Mr. Mayor, hereby I move for the approval of minutes as presented for the mayor and council meetings held on August 5th, 2025, and August 12th, 2025.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next up is consent agenda. Mr. Mayor, we move that all the consent agenda be approved as presented. Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next up, introduction of an ordinance. amend the code of the city of Hagerstown by amending sections of Chapter 1, General Provisions, Article 3, thereof municipal infractions.
Mr. Mayor, hereby I move that mayor and council introduce an ordinance to amend the code of city of Hagerstown, Chapter 1, Article 3, by amending section to the Chapter 1, General Provision, Article 3, Municipal Infractions, which will increase the maximum penalties for municipal infractions citations to $5,000 for certain municipal infractions.
Sir, a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next, introduction of an ordinance. amend the city code or amend the code of the city of Hagerstown by amending a section of Chapter 64, Building Construction, Article 3, thereof, property maintenance standards.
Mr. Mayor, hereby I move that the mayor and city council introduce an ordinance to amend the code of the city of Hagerstown, Chapter 64, Article 3, by amending a section to Chapter 64, Building and Construction, Article 3, Property Maintenance Standards, which will increase the present maximum penalties for municipal infraction citations ranging from $500 to $5,000.
Have a second?
Oh, second, I thought.
Oh, you did? Kristen had that second.
Okay. There's something over there.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Introduction of an ordinance. amend the code of the city of Hagerstown by amending a section of Chapter 185, Nuisance Abatement.
Mr. Mayor, hereby I move that the mayor and city council introduce an ordinance to amend the code of city of Hagerstown, Chapter 185, Nuance Abatement, which will increase the maximum penalties for the municipal infraction citations to $5,000.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Introduction of an ordinance. amend the code of the city of Hagerstown by amending a section of Chapter 232, Vacant Non-Residential Structures.
Mr. Mayor, hereby I move that the mayor and city council introduce an ordinance to amend the code of city of Hagerstown, Chapter 232, Vacant Non-Residential Structures, which will increase the maximum penalties for municipal infraction citations to $5,000.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Introduction of an ordinance. amend the code of the city of Hagerstown by amending a section of Chapter 233, Vacant Residential Structures.
Mr. Mayor, hereby I move that the mayor and city council introduce an ordinance to add Chapter 235, Vending Machines, to the code of city, to the code of the city of Hagerstown. This added chapter will regulate.
Wrong one.
Wrong one. Scratch that guy. Let's do this over. Mr. Mayor, hereby I move that the mayor and city council introduce an ordinance to amend the code of city of Hagerstown, Chapter 233, Vacant Residential Structures, which will increase the maximum penalties for the municipal infraction citations to $5,000.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Introduction of an ordinance. add Chapter 234, Vending Machines, to the city code.
Mr. Mayor, hereby I move that the mayor and city council introduce an ordinance to add Chapter 234, Vending Machines, to the code of the city of Hagerstown. This added chapter will regulate the number, placement, use, and maintenance of vending machines on public sidewalks.
Have a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Approval of a resolution. approval to enter into a parking lease with the Maryland State Department of Education, Division of Rehabilitation Services.
Mr. Mayor, we move mayor and council to approve a resolution to enter into a parking lease with the Maryland State Department of Education, Division of Rehabilitation Services. City of Hagerstown shall provide seven undesignated parking spaces in the University District parking deck located at 25 North Potomac Street. The term of the parking lease is two years beginning on December 1, 2025, and concluding on November 30, 2027, with a possible renewal of two, term of two years. The parking rate shall be $70 per month per space for a total annual amount of $5,880.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Request the change of scope of project for CDC Tax Sale Acquisition Rehab Grant Program.
Mr. Mayor, hereby I move for mayor and council to authorize staff to amend the scope of project work for the CDC Tax Sale Acquisition/Rehab Grant Program. The program is funded through the Maryland Community Legacy Grant to the city of Hagerstown and is subject to any restrict, subject to any restrictions, including deadlines from Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Motion passes. Approval of after-school program at the Parkside Community Center.
Mr. Mayor, hereby I move for mayor and council approval for funding of the after-school program at Parkside Community Center. The HHA provides a variety of constructive after-school programs to area youth. This program runs from the, runs for the 2025 to 2026 school year at a cost of $23,000.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Discussion, just for the record, I am not doing the after-school program. Because it was mine, so I just wanted to put that on the record.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Apply for a community forestry catalyst grant from the Chesapeake Bay Trust.
Mr. Mayor, hereby I move to authorize staff to apply for a community forestry catalyst fund grant from the Chesapeake Bay Trust to fund the preparation of tree planting sites in the city. The city will request $50,000 in grant funding to be matched by $10,000 in local funds from the Storm Water Protection Program. These funds will be used to prepare at least 30 tree pits for future tree planting.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay. Next up, my favorite, general citizen comments. They're welcome, and they shall be limited to three minutes. I ask everybody to please, we have a fair amount of people signed up, please keep it at three minutes. If you're finishing a sentence up, I will most certainly let you do that. Janet, or I'm sorry, Donna will have the timer on the screen there, that way you can see it. And also, the general citizen comments on 7.1 of our rules of procedure shall be to pertain to city business and shall be limited to three minutes. Let's see, first up, we have Michael Stow.
Good evening, Michael Stow, East End, South Mulberry Street. Real quickly, I've given the clerk pictures for you to take a look at. We have an intersection going up South Mulberry Street to East Antietam, and everybody's, Scott will be familiar with good old alley 3045 behind the hospital. That is an intersection with no stop signs. If you come up South Mulberry, you'll see a sign in the picture that says no right turn, where everybody's going up that alley to Locust. And in the end, you're going to see someone get killed there before it's over. There's been several accidents. The Church of the Brethren lost their fence recently and had to replace it because of people turning there. Someone really needs to take a look at it, because you have people speeding down the hill from Cannon, going through, straight across the street, but you have 50 mile an hour people coming up the street in hot rods. There's going to be trouble there, and maybe someone should, there's no stop signs at all anywhere. So that's our big issue right now over there, so we would appreciate that. The other issue I want to let you know about real quickly is, I had a real issue with the Herald Mail here this week. This pertains to the city. I found out my paper was being thrown on the street, on the sidewalk. Now, if I live on South Mulberry, we don't have a driveway, so when I call, I get, well, our policy is to throw the paper in your driveway, but we don't have driveway. So the paper's on the street, the papers, so they took care of that problem, but I also learned that us $15 subscription rate people are going to $35 now, plus tax, $37.10. And their reasoning was, they are getting away from delivery in the city. In certain areas, they want you to go digital. So that's something that the residents, I'm sure there's other people having issues with their newspaper. I know there's plenty in our area that are having it, so that's something I'd like to talk to you about. The other thing is, I'm an observer, and what went on with the Thunder in the Square, I think that was a big crowd that helped downtown. And I've been purposely going into these new, these restaurants and bars that I've never attended before. I'm not, I'm not drunk all the time, but I'm sampling their food, and there are a lot of great places in downtown Hagerstown. The problem, I think, is they're not being promoted. The newspaper is not putting anything in there about your city. If it is in there, it's three or four days late. And the paper really has went downhill. So I think you really need to devote some time to promote more downtown, because that Thunder in the Square, every restaurant over there and bar that I went in said the same thing, we had good crowds. And that's the purpose of downtown. Sure, we have Meredith's Park, and I'm addicted to Meredith's Park now, and I was one of their biggest, on their tails when they were building it, but I am a fan of Meredith's Park now. So that's another thing. The only other thing I'm going to ask you to take a look at is from East Antietam and Locust. From South Potomac down to Locust, take a little trip down there at night, and in the daytime now. And I'm going to tell you what, it's not a pleasant picture to see. That's not Sean Porter, is it? Yeah. You have to, usually he's in front of me. Oh, Lord, thank you. Anyhow, you really need to pay attention to that area, because that area is deteriorating very bad.
Can you finish up, Mike?
And the last thing is, I can buy the fieldhouse, if you have an interest in that Hagerstown fieldhouse. I'm not seeing many cars.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I forgot to say, when, when Michael come up, to make sure you state your name and address, I should, I forgot that. So even though I say your name, just go ahead and state your name and address, please. Keep it at three minutes, please. All right, next up, Carrie Cosner.
Hi, my name is Carrie Cosner. I reside at 1881 Zero Fountain Terrace, Hagerstown, Maryland. Hello, mayor and the council. With recent mention of consideration of rent control, I would like to present some information for consideration. As a longtime landlord and resident of Hagerstown, with over three decades of experiencing managing rental properties, I do appreciate the opportunity to present to you the critical issue of housing affordability. I deeply care about my tenants. Many are families, seniors, and working professionals, singles, facing rising costs in our growing community. For landlords, it may appear initially that a rent increase means increasing our bottom line. That has not been the case. I know how tough it is out there with 16% rising property insurance, over 10% rising property taxes, as well as rising maintenance cost. But I'm not here to talk about that. I am here, really, to talk about how, in my opinion, and I believe that the facts bear it out, from other municipalities, that rent control does not benefit anyone in the end. Not the landlord, not the tenant, and not the city of Hagerstown. I know the city is striving hard to bring about improved community for all residents and businesses, and housing affordability is a key issue, but I do not think rent control is the answer. While rent control may seem like a quick fix to protect renters from increases, evidence from other municipalities have shown that that is counterproductive. Just have to look at Tacoma Park. I'm going to hand to the city clerk more information on that, because I don't have three minutes, that would go into detail, but that was not a successful project. Closer to home, Rockville's 2000 stabilization triggered hidden fees and a 15% drop in new housing starts as developers fled to other areas that did not have rent control. The policies reduced supply, degraded the quality, and lowered tax revenues, straining schools and infrastructure, and that happens throughout, throughout the board. Again, so the disadvantages of, the negatives of rent control is reduced housing availability, longer wait times, declining property value, black market practices and hidden costs that are crept in to try to make up the slack, barriers for newcomers coming in, because the rent control doesn't protect from higher rent. So it is a barrier for that. Instead, we need, obviously, to provide affordable housing, but I do not think rent control is the answer. In closing, I just urge you to reject any rent control in its infancy and focus on sustainable solutions. I'd be happy to be on that. I know the community block, block development is hard at work on that, and I think there's other successful ways to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Next up, Sabina Jewels. No Sabina? Okay. Huh? Okay. Alva Moses.
Alva Moses, 11 West Baltimore Street, Hagerstown, Maryland. Dear council, while attention has recently focused on disputes such as ethics, as of the ethics complaint involving council member Erica Bell, I believe our energy is better spent on the real needs of our community. Too many lives are being lost to overdoses, and we should be working together to expand access to Narcan in public spaces, stores, and even through machines that make it easily available in emergencies in certain areas. At the same time, we must encourage our youth to engage with leadership and voting, in voting ways that uplift them, not discourage them. When young people reach out, they should be met with respect and guidance, so they feel their voices matter. Progress, progress is made when we focus on saving lives, building trust, and creating a welcoming environment for every citizen, rather than tearing one another down. Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Alva. Next up, Taj Smith.
Good evening, mayor and city council. My name is Taj Smith, and I reside 1358 Salem Avenue. I am the president of the Washington County NAACP, and I'm here to say that we support Vote 16 Initiative, which seeks to lower the voting age for local elections to 16. The NAACP has consistently advocated for policies that expand voting access, ensuring every individual can engage in our democracy. We support pre-registration for young voters, oppose voter suppression, and actively promote civic participation among youth. This movement is vital for boosting youth involvement in our democracy, enabling them to vote on issues that directly impact their lives. Currently, at least five municipalities in Maryland have lowered the voting age for local elections. This shows that it can be done. Hagerstown youth should not be left out. By adopting this change, we can become the first city in Western Maryland to do so. While leaders make decisions that significantly affect young people, they often lack representation in important discussions. Empowering young voters fosters civic engagement and increases voter turnout for future elections. The existence of a city youth council reflects that you already value youth input. It is worth noting that 16-year-olds can drive, work, and pay taxes. Some would even push for 16-year-olds to become parents, yet they are denied access to a ballot. In Maryland, they can serve as election judges, which raises the question, why are they deemed mature enough to oversee elections but not vote in them? I find it shameful that councilperson Flaherty has invoked the issue of undocumented voters to argue against Vote 16. These topics are unrelated, and our youth should not be pawns for your political rhetoric. Concerns about the financial implications of this change have also been brought up. Recently, the city spent $12 million on a largely empty parking garage, and $2.5 million on the old YMCA. How much did the city spend to have a burger competition, or put glitter and butterflies in the asphalt? If funds can be found for such projects, surely we can allocate resources to empower our youth with a voice and a vote. The costs associated with this change would be minimal in comparison and occurring only once every four years. There is no price too high to remove barriers for voting access for our youth. I urge you to add lowering the voting age to 16 to the agenda for a vote. Doing so will benefit our youth and the future of our city. Thank you.
Next up, Zoe Burnett.
Hi, my name is Zoe Burnett, and I reside at 1358 Salem Avenue as well. Good evening, mayor and council. Thank you again for allowing me to speak tonight about Vote 16. I'm here because I believe in young people, and I believe that 16 and 17-year-olds deserve a voice in the decisions that shape Hagerstown. After the last council meeting I spoke at, I received an email from Councilman Sean Flaherty. He shared that he does not support lowering the voting age here in Hagerstown. I appreciate that he took the time to respond to me, but I want to push back, because dismissing this idea means dismissing the voices of hundreds of young people in our community, who are all, who already contribute to the city in meaningful ways. 16 and 17-year-olds in Hagerstown work jobs, pay taxes, drive on our roads, and follow the same laws as adults. We volunteer, we participate in school board meetings, we join city programs, and we hear deeply about the community, the future of Hagerstown, more so than others. We have a real stake in the decisions being made, and we deserve a seat at the table. Vote 16 is about more than just lowering the voting age. It is about empowering youth, increasing civic engagement, and creating lifelong voters who will stay involved in our democracy. This is not about letting people who are ineligible vote. It is about making sure the eligible young residents of Hagerstown, who are citizens and who live here, have the opportunity to be heard. That's why I'm asking you to take the, tonight, to take the next step. I'm asking this council to begin drafting an amendment to the city charter that would lower the voting age to 16 for local elections. This change would allow young people to vote for leaders who make decisions about our streets, our parks, our public safety, and our future. Places across the nation that have lowered the voting age have seen a higher voter turnout and more informed young voters who remain involved for life. Hagerstown has an opportunity to lead in Washington County and in Maryland by showing that we trust and value our young people enough to include them in this process. I'm ready to work with you to make this happen. I hope you will take this request seriously and begin the process of drafting that amendment, so we can move forward together. Thank you for your time and for listening.
Thank you.
Next up, James Shields.
Hello, my name. Hello, my name is James Ryan Spencer Shields. Jim, I reside at 333 Central Avenue, and I just want to say on behalf of everybody that's here today, you know, there's a multitude of, you know, historical elements. I play Ivory Coast, known from Harvest Elephantus, great leaders, by the way. You know, when you look at the people of this country and town, you know, we're living in trying times, you know? If you look at history, the goal of history is to learn from it, so we have to come together. We have homeless people, we have economic crisis, you know, education, debts, bills. I mean, I live in the West Side House, and I pay, I could be homeless tomorrow, down and out, you know? You know, like James Brown say, you know, get on the good foot, family. So, you know, I'm here for the people, you know? It's all about all this other fighting and caring, also about bringing people together. I think some literature, as in George Orwell's 1984, we want a utopia, not a dystopia. I think, you know, Mysalmen, John Steinbeck, I think, you know, a lot of literature, if you look at it in real life, and make a lot of sense, you know, man versus self, self versus man. You know, at the end of the day, you know, we have to come together to change politics and articulate ourselves. You know, I know we're saying democracy, family, but I have your back. We're actually a constitutional federal republic, so misconceptions, you know, superstitions, taboos, you know, we have different diversities, different demographics, different personalities, different ways of life, different cultures. So when we come together to make the world a better place, because we're a hodgepodge or a heterogeneous mixture as a salad, or a simile, or whatever they want to articulate or say, we have our feminism, bring feminism to the table, so it's balanced, you know? We have to come together, because if we don't change the narrative now, we never will, you know? But I think, like she was saying, you know, we got crises going on, we got people, we got fighting, and this is at a local level. So we don't come together at a local level, couldn't imagine the atrocities, you know, and the dissension, one could say, you know, at a massive level. But, you know, it affects everybody, you know, it affects the women, it affects the cultures, it affects the babies, it affects the teenagers when they transition to early adulthood. I don't have children, but I think like a parent. I'm not a parent, but my adult logic is like a parent. I don't have my kingle hat on today. So, you know, it's all about knowledge and wisdom and insight and clarity, and I think once we come together to be students and study and see our issues and see the symptoms, then we can remedy them thereof. And I just think, you know, with sagacity and with community and coming together, let's learn our neighbors, let's learn who, let's stop trying to, well, we don't want to look at this issue, so we're going to push you, no, 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 we're going to address it. See? No, 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 that's the problem with, that's why we have all these upheaval moments in this country, uprisings and problems, because we never addressed the symptoms from a long time ago. And I like what Marilyn Monroe once said, Norma Jean, also loved telling myself, she once said something that make a lot of sense, when I'm by myself, I can restore myself. So we don't come together and learn from each other, you know, analyze the differences, look at, you know, differences, but then compare, and then go about our day, but we have to come together to save this community, because if not, it would be hypocritical and irony in itself, you know, to say something, but I'm homeless, but I'm not. So at the end of the day, imagine if it was your life, vicariously speaking, or somebody else, you know, put yourself in somebody else's shoes, you know? It's like when foreigners come here, they get ahead in education, but Americans, men have been squandering it, so you have to write, read, and think more, and push yourself. My time is up. My time is up, and I thank you for yours.
Thank you.
Next up is Don Schellhart.
Hello, my name is Don Schellhart. I live at Act 90 Manor Drive, Apartment 103. And you gotta add the apartment 103 on the mail, or they won't deliver it. I'm here because I received a flyer and other informations suggesting that the city council is considering changing its anti-encampment policy and either easing up or tightening screws on treatment of the homeless. I'd like to say that I'm very aware that many homeless people have an image of this negative. They're seen as drinking and drugging all day, not offering anything of value to society. Well, there are homeless people like that. But I also know homeless people with a lot of talent, a lot of potential to do good. And I thought I should say a few words about them to kind of balance out the record. I might surprise some people that I know any homeless. I don't fit the profile of someone who would have ties to homeless community. I grew up on an affluent New York City suburb. I'm well-educated, with three academic degrees. And I've been active in Republican politics in past years. I was an attorney for the Republican Member of Congress in House War for the House Republican Research Committee. But seeing, well, I guess 40 years of living, 50 years of living, and so on, can change your mind. I have a different perspective now. I want to tell you about three people I can remember in particular that were special homeless people. One of them had an interest in law, and she had taken the law boards, just for fun, quote-unquote, just for fun. I know, I know, I think it's funny, too. But anyway, she showed me her scores, and with no formal legal education whatsoever, she scored 780 out of a possible 800 points. Just for the record, I scored 656. So what did I do? I was in solo practice at the time in the Shenandoah Valley. I offered her a part-time job as my paralegal. And in return for that, I gave her free room and board and paid her a small stipend. And she could use the rest of her time to work at the 7-Eleven or whatever. Uh-oh. Okay, let's just say I know, I could name two other people who are very bright, and two out of three made it out of homelessness. So it can be done. And we should give them a little, we've got to watch out for the bad guys, but we got to try to spot the ones with potential and give them help.
All right, thank you, Don. Next up, Jody Mayo. Looks like you don't live too far from myself.
I think we're neighbors. I actually think she's your neighbor, but... Hi, everybody, thank you so much for the time tonight. My name is Jody Mayo. I live at 1306 Oak Hill Avenue, and I'm here tonight to express my concerns about the volume of cars and frequent speeding on my street. And I think this applies to my neighborhood, but of course, unfortunately, applies to a lot of Hagerstown. So I just want to reference the email that I sent a couple of, well, 10 days or so ago. I'm a resident of Oak Hill Avenue and want to express my concerns about the traffic conditions on our street. The high volume of cars and frequent speeding make it unsafe for residents, for children, and for pedestrians. Based on the recent safety plan that was sent out and was asked for comments, I understand that the city is considering narrowing the street and adding bike lanes to mimic a nearby street where, unfortunately, a gentleman was recently struck and killed. I worry these changes may not solve the underlying problems on our street and could create new safety risks. My request is how to proceed with additional changes on our own street and how to go about that. And I respectfully request a repeat traffic study on volume and speed on our street at a time specifically during the school year when volumes seem to be particularly higher. I also request that it be done under the lens that this is a residential city street and not one where excessive speed should be allowed. If you travel on that street and you come from the end, up past Long Meadow, down through town, you'll notice that the speed actually increases, which I'm not sure why, but it goes from 25 to 30 where the houses are, which seems additionally unsafe to me. I personally feel that the speed should be reduced. I also am asking for actual traffic calming measures, not just stop signs and a traffic camera that mimics your speed, but something that actually enforces or requires people to slow down. I'm also asking for more time for direct input from residents in the planning process or for those changes, but focusing on changes that will actually improve safety. I do also request that changes to our street with enforcement be considered sooner than proposed in the plan. I think we were a little bit lower on the list than some of the other areas, which I do understand, but our street is equally as important, and there's been several fatalities that have happened on our street. We do want safe, livable streets that work for drivers, bikers, children, pets, and neighbors alike. And I thank you for your consideration. Thank you.
I do see my neighbor back there, and I apologize for my dog barking at you every morning when you run. Next up is our former mayor, Tequisha Martinez.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tequisha Martinez, 136, wait, 13607 Rock Cliff Drive. I show up in community in many different ways. And this evening, I'm not here as a poet, a politician, but a mediator. A mediator sees the difference between honest conflict and manufactured confusion. Conflict can be resolved, confusion is stirred to keep us spinning, distracted, and divided. And right now, too much of what we are seeing is confusion. Many believe they are pulling the strings, but in reality, they are the ones tangled in them, used by forces that profit from confusion and feed on division. Let me be clear. Division may stir the waters, but it will never heal the city. Confusion may grab attention, but it will never build trust. And trust is the currency this city cannot afford to lose. When leaders play games with people's trust, they play games with the very future of Hagerstown. This is not strategy, that is a sabotage. While politics fight for headlines, reconciliation is already being practiced in our community every day. I urge the community to join causes that help bring us together and not divide. Leadership is not measured by how loud you argue, but how well you clear the smoke so people can see a clear, truthful path forward. And to those pushing division, understand this. You cannot build community by breaking people apart. You cannot lead a city while feeding confusion. That is cowardly politics, and there is no place for that in Hagerstown. Reconciliation is not a weakness, it is wisdom, it is survival. It is the only strategy that leaves something whole for generations coming after us. The health of Hagerstown is tied to the health of our conversations. And tonight, I'm calling us back, back to clarity, back to reconciliation, and back to the truth that this city's strength lies in its people. People don't support businesses, people support people. Let me say that again. People do not support businesses, people support people. As the owners, as the business owners of the Incorporated City of Hagerstown, it is clear sabotage for you not to be moving cohesive together for the people. And so, I challenge you. I challenge you to join things and do things that bring us together, to step out with your neighbors, whether they look like you, sound like you, move like you, or align with you. Do that. Show up in community where people are actually working together to heal the divide. I ask you, on October 10th, there will be a step fundraiser. Line dancers will be in town teaching line dancing steps to raise money for reentry. That will be happening downtown Hagerstown. October 11th, Run for Reentry. Delegate Charcutian will start her 70-mile journey from Hagerstown to Baltimore City to raise money for returning citizens. I don't want to say let's compete with Frederick, but y'all know how I feel. Frederick shows up and shows out, maybe it's because she gets there at lunchtime. She leaves here at 7:00 a.m. But I urge you to join us out at MCIH parking lot, just to maybe a recognition, just to say thank you for her doing that, which helps with our public safety in our city. And one more thing, I would like to invite you to Gatekeepers. We're hosting a host for Foundation for Our Future. We're honoring Bill Gertner's legacy right here in Hagerstown, how he's turned prison, he's turned from prison to a peacemaker. That's what reconciliation looks like. These programs are not theory, they work directly with the community, building bridges, healing divides, and teaching people how to collaborate and work forward together. This is what keeps a strong city. So I urge our leaders, and I know I'm about time.
Yes, you are.
I'm sorry, I'm taking a personal privilege. So I urge our leaders to resist the temptation to play political games because tactics rooting in division will not build trust, they will not build community, they will only leave you stranded on a political island, isolated and ineffective because reconciliation builds legacy. Proof is in the pudding, thank you.
Next up, we have Levi Trumble.
Good evening, City of Hagerstown, Maryland Council. My name is Levi Trumble, residing at 100 West Washington Street, Hagerstown, Maryland. It's nice to be speaking in front of a board that does not outlaw free speech like the Washington County Commissioners. And since they no longer allow public comment, I have a few things to say about them. So first, Michelle Gordon is not releasing the funds to the City of Hagerstown, Maryland as it relates to the marijuana sales tax. So basically, Washington County, they sell a bunch of marijuana, and they're not releasing the 600 grand to the City of Hagerstown that they are entitled to. And I hope that the City of Hagerstown hunts her down and gets that money because you're entitled to it, you could use it to treat the opioid epidemic here in Hagerstown. And I hope, like I said, you hunt her down because she said she doesn't know how to spend the money, that's really not her call, it's up to the City of Hagerstown, bottom line. Another thing I want to talk about is that the 2026 Washington County election is coming right up. You need to vote for Curtis Ray, he is a great guy. He's not a politician, he's just like any other person, he's your average Joe type of guy. He is for the people, bottom line. He has been facing a litany of lawfare as it relates to just trying to run for a simple Washington County Commissioner's spot. As you guys may or may not know, he brought in some Circuit Court documentation relating to Commissioner-President John Barr that John Barr found to be disfavorable to his reputation. So in response to that, he had Curtis Ray arrested and charged with trespassing. And Curtis Ray is currently facing all that lawfare, and he's going through hell for simply just trying to exercise his First Amendment, God-given right to free speech. And so we need to support him. Great guy, down-to-earth, not a politician. I also want to talk about Derek Harvey, he has got to go as well. He inappropriately touched Justin Holder, and he was charged with second-degree assault, but that case was actually dropped. They no-prost it because he's a Washington County Commissioner, and that is a protected class here in Washington County. Thank you very much, Gina, for letting that case go by the wayside, even though you had plenty of evidence. And then he turned around and lied to the Herald Mail and said that he never touched him when it's on video and multiple people witnessed it. Now, Justin Holder, I will say for the record, we're encouraging him not to do it, but he has publicly asserted that he is going to and has strong urges to touch Commissioner Harvey back. Again, we are encouraging him not to do that, but we'll see. In other news, as it relates to Mr. Porter's $104 million lawsuit against all of Washington County, that one's a real doozy. We have a huge legal victory, and that is Facebook has settled with Mr. Porter and has reinstated his Facebook account. So anybody who thought that was a nonmeritorious counterclaim, already he's making ground very early on. And in case nobody heard, and I'm going to wrap up right now, but in case nobody heard, Attorney Sarah Spatownik, the attorney who filed John Barr's anti-free speech defamation lawsuit against Mr. Porter, filed a similar defamation lawsuit in Carroll County, and that case was recently sanctioned by the judge to the tune of over $12,000 for bringing a nonmeritorious defamation case against the friend of her current boyfriend's baby daddy's friend. It's a lot of crazy.
Can you wrap it up, Levi?
So in closing, I just want to say, vote for Curtis Ray. I don't know when I'll be here again to speak, but vote for Curtis Ray, he's an awesome dude. He's going to clean up Washington County, and he is going to restore the First Amendment to the people and work for the people day in and day out. Vote Curtis Ray.
Thank you, Levi.
Thank you.
Next up, Ray Gallagher. Did I pronounce that correct?
Yes, I am Ray Gallagher, I'm President of the Frederick County Public School Board. I'm not telling you my address because I got active warrants, I don't want you all to go around sleeping on it.
All right, okay.
My hobbies and interests are sniffing glue and old homeless men. But the real reason I'm here today is to correct the record. It was spread all over town that after being screamed at by some total asshole named Shawn Porter, John Barr had a heart attack and had to leave a public meeting and a public hearing after public comment period for public hearing items in an ambulance with a heart attack. That was spread by Beth Harvey. It turns out it was simply a massive bowel obstruction because, like all politicians, he was completely full of shit. So he's recovering nicely, he actually made it out to an event on Friday evening, he's good to go. But sad news, he's announced he is not running for reelection. He did this on Wednesday by endorsing Governor Wes Moore, who's a Democrat, and John Barr is running in the Republican primaries. So he basically shot himself in the foot unless he's switching to the party of the Democrats, which won't work because his company, Ellsworth Electric, which is under a massive boycott right now by at least two people, is a union-busting organization that blocks International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers from unionizing their facility, they have almost 100 employees, and anyone that tries to unionize gets fired. So therefore, the Democrats won't support John Barr either. That's why he ran as an independent in 2018 and lost miserably because he didn't like Donald Trump, our Lord and Savior. Is that sentiment, nothing to be shared by this room here? He hated Trump so much, he ran as an independent, lost, he ran as a Republican again, and he is partway through that term now, and he's trying to salvage what's left of his reputation after arresting Curtis Ray for free speech at a public meeting, suing me for $10 million for a yard sign based on settled Supreme Court case law from the 1988 case of Hustler Magazine Incorporated versus Falwell. It's a satire Capri liquor ad wherein it describes the individual in the ad, John Barr, having sex with his mother in an outhouse while drunk on Capri liquor. I want to set the record straight, he did not have sex with his mother in an outhouse drunk on Capri liquor. I got my facts wrong, it was Jeff Klein. So anyhow, that's all I really came to say, I want to set the record straight. He didn't have a heart attack, he's just completely full of shit. John Barr is probably going to be at the next meeting this coming Tuesday, if you want to go wish him well in his retirement because he has absolutely no chance of winning reelection. In regards to Derek Harvey, he's a worthless, lying, conniving, piece of crap, wannabe spy, former intel guy. He got fired by Donald Trump, so don't let him tell you Trump likes him. He got fired by Trump, tried to get a job with Trump again, and couldn't even get a job with Trump again in the next administration when they were shorthanded. Basically, Derek Harvey will lie his ass off. He actually sat and talked to County Attorney Zach Kiefer and said, "We've never had any FOIA violations, have we, Zach?" "Well, no, we haven't." "Derek?" "Oh, that's great." "Well, I'm actually involved in civil litigation against them for Public Information Act violations," which is what it's called in Maryland. FOIA is Federal Freedom of Information Act, that's in regards to publication of public records and providing it to the people. We have the Public Information Act in Washington County and in the state of Maryland. He has this many active, that's a lot, PIA cases going on right now with the Attorney General's Office for records that we're entitled to, that they are refusing to release, including a 911 call where it is alleged that John Barr called 911 on lawful... on lawful protesters because they had a sign that he didn't like related to the whole lawsuit thing. So anyway, guys, thank you for having me out here tonight. Take it easy.
Call tomorrow, Bill.
Next up?
Jason.
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 What's the last name?
Jason McGill.
Okay, okay. Next up, Jason McGill. Sorry. Couldn't read it. I even have my glasses on, Jason. I still couldn't read it.
Hello. Yes. Jason McGill, lives in South, 35 North Potomac Street now. Happy to be here. First public comment here back in Hagerstown. There's actually a lot of stuff that I can bring to the council here. But for this evening, I'm going to talk about Vote 16 and why you should vote yes, or really consider bringing it to a vote for this council. Local elections shape daily life more than national races. Local governments decide critical issues that affect our daily routines, such as schools, libraries, parks, transportation, housing, policing, and local public health. When we expand the electorate to include younger residents who are directly affected by these decisions, we get a more accurate and representative reflection of the community's needs. Young people today have access to robust information and discourse via trusted local sources, school programs, and community groups. In addition, voting early builds lifelong civic participation. Research shows that when people vote in the first elections they are eligible for, they are more likely to vote consistently in the future. Allowing 16- and 17-year-olds to vote locally can cultivate a habit of participation, strengthening our democracy in the long run. Local issues deserve local voices. Decisions about school, safety, sidewalks, and transit are closest to home and impact young residents' futures more directly than many national concerns. Lastly, including younger residents helps ensure policies are crafted with all generations in mind, fostering intergenerational dialogue and collaboration. I urge you to consider lowering the voting age to 16. More to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Stephanie Phillips.
Good evening, councilmembers. I represent the Phillips family, City of Hagerstown, Maryland. I noticed the other day, driving past the Potterfield Pool, that you don't have a cover over top of it. You could talk to your counterparts in Montgomery County, and they could explain some of the advantages to putting a secure cover over top. You might want to consider circulating the water throughout the winter, maybe adding a heating element, capacity, and generator, thus being able to access extra water in an emergency, too. I'm unscripted tonight, but, you know, I've spoken a lot on national security, about the dams up north, about preserving agriculture. I didn't say anything for like six months that two nights after I got released from the hospital from being run over by the car, I was getting a donation of bandages from my daughter, and I could barely stand up. I'm convinced I was bleeding internally. My blood pressure was extremely low. We weren't out there five minutes, and a woman on a pair of crutches walked by who looked exactly like her while she was in high school. She's a very unique-looking young lady, amputated at the thigh. My daughter's face went pale. She was speechless. I was speechless. She left. I didn't say anything until like six months later. I mentioned it matter-of-factly, no drama here. And I really have been working on mission government goals. I earn my government paycheck. I didn't know what to say. I've never spoken to her father about it to this day. I waited until Christmas at the family get-together, and I said, "You know, that wasn't naturally occurring the day that woman walked by." And all she said was, "Interesting." And then she got very silent again. Well, my family probably is more aware of this fact. Now, if Smithburg got tapped for the water resource that got plumbed down this far to the east end of the community, should be plumbed all the way here. Water can come through a mountain with pressure and gravity. You could create a continuous reservoir. Our family mountaintop has been sought after for 40 years. I wanted the last holdouts. I believe this was an act of intimidation, this person walking by my daughter and I in that moment, because they could generate upwards of a trillion dollars over a half-century. My family has said no to putting a cell phone tower in our property. We've said no to putting a dam. We've suggested two medium dams on the poles of the county, plumb to the center where there's a college. It has already been plumbed out to a big city who really overbuilt, not having the water resources. And in a recent natural disaster, it was pretty devastating. Now, they bypassed our county where they stole that water from. They could have done a lot of good infrastructure needs. I support you all getting water plumbed out here from the east end, fair and equitable. And it would help us if we did the damming project. We could get electricity from Berkeley and Frederick if we needed it, if we lost power. But those dams up north need to be rebuilt. They're about 100 years old now. It's in the best interest of our country. So goes the nation, so goes our country. It's in the best interest of the Port of Baltimore, the Delaware River. There are three dams across central Pennsylvania that all, we are sandwiched between the nation's capital. It's a lot of responsibility for the community. I believe everyone is up for the task. So I hope you understand the key takeaway here. My family could have earned millions of dollars giving up the rights to build a dam in our neighborhood.
Can you go ahead and wrap it up, please?
And we said no, but we are supporting the needs of this community, where most of us have lived in Maryland most of our lives.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else signed up? There's their emails. Donna? I'm, don't, I will. If anybody else, yeah, hang on one second. Yeah, if anybody else is not signed up that would go ahead and like to take their three minutes, please keep it, please keep it to three minutes. All right.
Good afternoon. My name is Justin Icabs of Stevens City, Virginia. I would like to address with starting words, legalize it. I feel like the skate community for a long time has been treated as if we're outlaws, no matter what we do. And we've worked and come a long way and got skate parks built all over the country. I actually helped build one for you guys in Middletown. And the crazy thing was, they were trying to kick us out while building it. The police officers were coming to tell us we couldn't be there after dark. It's like the concrete's curing. You can't tell us how long we can stay to finish to cure the concrete, because it has to be done a certain way to make the concrete come out right. But that's neither here nor there. My point being here is that we have an issue. I think it's an issue. There's on Google Earth, it says the skate parks open 24 hours. Back where I'm from, down south in North Carolina, we have skate parks that are open 24 hours with lights, all that, blah, blah, blah. I mean, there's not really any close by housing where you're really bothering anybody, as long as you don't have boombox, you're not being obnoxious, you're not doing drugs, you're not underage. But the real issue is the underage children there, just hanging out, doing drugs, not actually skating. And the real problem, I believe, is I have lights of my own that I bring and skate there. I pretty much lived like as a resident here all of last year while I was building the skate park in Middletown. And so I skated all through the winter. But for some reason, every time it's summertime and these golf cart guys come around, they start causing mischief, as you could say. And they only seem to harass the skateboarders for skateboarding and leave the BMX biker good old boys that are their friends completely alone and drive me absolutely insane, because I'm just trying to use the space for what it's made for. I want to keep skateboarding legal. I don't want to, I don't want to have to go out in the streets and go vandalize your property, because they won't let me skate at a place designated for skateboarding. You get what I mean? Because that's what it was designed for. So my closing statement is that I feel that skateboarding is important enough for mental health and for kids and for bonding and people to get together and community. And it can really save kids from going down a bad path in life and give them hope and a goal and a dream and aspiration to make them a more driven person in society, as well as in the world. I mean, look at some of the skateboarders that have, you know, climbed, achieving crazy goals. I mean, Rob Dierdek, all these people, Tony Hawk, the list goes on and on. But it's a great sport. We need it. But we need it whenever we want, whenever we want to be able to access it, because people go run at the park, and they're not out there saying, "Hey, you can't run after dark." They're not harassing them. And they're also not even harassing the kids sitting there doing drugs. They're only coming over to me because I have a light. And it's like, boy, this is making it safer, all right? This isn't doing anything. And I'm not sitting here doing drugs. I'm not drinking. So it's just one of those things that I feel like needs to be addressed. And I would be willing to donate my time and hours to put in lights at some point. I mean, I'm taking electrical courses. I'm a certified welder. I've worked with the skate park company that actually built that skate park. So I mean, I could donate all my time to do it myself. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Stick your name and address.
My name is Kelly Honey. I'm from Front Royal, Virginia. I actually sent an email addressing the same thing. I am a active user and regular user of the Hagerstown Skate Park. And I have also experienced unequal treatment with me skating versus the BMXers. I propose that maybe the police just put it on the beat, and if we're not doing anything illegal, then we're left alone. Especially, I work with children all day. I don't necessarily want to be there. It's my break. It's my catharsis. It's my, you know, I don't drink. I don't do drugs. This is my release. And about two weeks ago, I was there skating, and one of the golf cart guys came right up, started screaming, cursing, telling me to get out. Meanwhile, the other people were there during the day. There are youth there. They are doing activities. So if the police just came, or illegal activities, if the police just made it part of the beat, I'm an adult. I'm there on my own, you know? The risk isn't there. We signed the waiver when we came in. Don't sign it, but I'm sorry. I'm really nervous. Just make it where we can be there legally, using the facilities for what it's intended, all hours of the day. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And what I think is that like, a lot of people work.
Yeah, that's the other thing.
You work all day or at school.
Yeah, when the hours.
Have to come back.
Okay, it's her turn.
Yeah, sorry. That was the other thing I was going to say. But by the time I get here and drive from Front Royal, if the hours, I don't have enough time during the day, like during the daylight, if it closes at dusk. It doesn't say it closes at dusk. It says it's open 24 hours. That was the other point. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
How you doing? My name is Eric Van Buren, Mayor, City Council. I live at 1106 Fry Avenue, close to this, close to this lane. I came up here with no specific remarks. I know I'm inspired by this community. I've been in this community probably nearly 18 months. And what I've seen has inspired me in such a way where I'm deciding to run for Senate. Now, listening to this older gentleman here and his comments about homeless people to her comments about people speeding down the street that I know they do, because I'm there seeing 16-year-olds wanting to vote, has inspired me. This town is indicative of where I grew up. And a lot of things that happen here happen in other places. With that being said, not to take up too much of your time, when I was sitting back there in my seat, I saw we are a character counts community. And I used to teach cognitive behavioral therapy where it was based on character. And the way you guys conduct yourself, very professional. When I saw Shawn Porter, I was like, oh, man, you know, I mean, something crazy about to happen. But the way you conducted yourself was definitely professional. And I just wanted to introduce myself to the mayor and to the council members and to the rest of Hagerstown. And I'd be looking forward to getting to know everyone over this next election cycle.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, any administrative?
Nothing tonight, Mayor. Thanks.
I'm sorry. Yeah, forgot about the emails. Go ahead.
Our emails came in were citizen comments. There were 31 from Shawn Porter, and it was a range of topics from Open Meeting Act complaints to concerns with individual council or county commissioners and cases against specific officials. There will be a list posted of all the emails. Then Justin Holder, there were six from him, basically the same topics as Mr. Porter. And Joseph Murtha, he referenced evidence correction for July 31st case with the county commissioners by oath. V. White of 1831 Winston Drive in Hagerstown is intending to attend regular session to discuss an ongoing issue with a storm drain. Lindsay Ward, no address given, expressing extreme disdain on water rate increases and the lack of communication regarding a 14% rate increase. Jody Mayo was here this evening. She did send the email, and I will make sure the mayor council see that one. Haley H. is concerned about the parking rates at the garage. She said that it's unacceptable and asks that you please reconsider the garage rates. Michael Lynch, in support of Vote 16 proposal, lowering the voting age fosters lifelong civic engagement. Kelly Honey from Virginia is here and provided the same information that she sent in the email. Gabby Moore, Regional Director of Vote 16 Maryland, and she encourages you to consider lowering the voting age. It increases overall civic involvement. Higher voter turnout rates. These students are paying attention and are ready to be heard. Hodge Smith is also here this evening and spoke, and she is in support of Vote 16. She also sent an email with an attachment from Ron Bowers, former county commissioner, in support of Vote 16. And then Kevin Karpinski is an attorney that's been retained for county defendants and also had two emails on the topics from Mr. Porter and Mr. Holder. And that was all.
That's it? Nothing's gone down? Councilwoman Anderson?
First, I want to thank mayor and council and for everyone who came out today to help. I mean, not help, but to everyone who came out to celebrate African Heritage Month. I also would like to say to Michelle from Washington County, please go ahead and release those documents. As for the 2026 elections, I just want to urge you to all be inspiring, but all be authentic and stay true. And the one takeaway that I would have for you is that without trust, then you have nothing. And that's all I have for tonight.
Councilwoman Flaherty?
Yeah, I mean, it's great to hear all the folks talking tonight. But no, I don't support 16-year-olds voting. I don't support rent control. I don't support illegal aliens voting like in Frederick. And actually, the city of Rockville recently, which is a much more progressive city than us, recently voted down allowing 16-year-olds to vote, along with allowing illegal aliens to vote. So I support common sense. I support the businesses and residents here who have overwhelmingly told me day in and day out how bad the crime's been. They want lower taxes, and they want common sense. And that's what I support. At the end of the day, the majority of residents and businesses here support that, too. So I just implore you all to have some common sense on some of these issues. And navigating on a local level, I support what the folks overwhelmingly have told me.
Councilwoman Bell?
I have nothing this evening.
Councilwoman Burnett?
I'm just going to go off script for a second. Like the kids say, I'm not going to crash out, so I'm going to go off script. These meetings, the regular meetings where we allow for citizens to come speak to us for three minutes, is really important to me. It's important to us here. But let me get something straight. Y'all need to be more respectful up in here. There's children watching. There's children in the room. We have an entire youth council. We encourage the youth to pay attention to politics and what's happening in local government. What I don't like is for people to come up in here and cuss and people to spread rumors and lies and use us as a political platform to get on their soapbox and disparage others. That is not the time for that. I'm over it. We want to hear about what's happening in your neighborhoods. We want to hear what's happening to you and your families. Not about what this person said or that person did. We want to hear what's happening to you and your families, not about what this person said or that person did. I'm over all of that. And I get that right now, we are such this, this large division as, as a whole, as a country. But don't bring that here. Don't bring that to the people that do this work every day. And again, I'm gonna say it again, $71 a week to do this work. Now, all we ask is you be respectful to us and to each other. We really don't have time. This administration is doing the best that we can. And a lot of these points that keeps coming up, we talk about it, we're so transparent. We, we have so many meetings about these, these topics over and over and over. Y'all not listening. I don't know how much more clear we can be. I personally post agendas every week. I typically give summaries about what we talk about every week. And I also have a full-time job saving patients that have cancer. And also trying to save Hagerstown. Again, off script, but I want to go back to what I was, was gonna talk about. And another thing, when you come here to, to give your three minutes, we as council do not interrupt you because we're respectful to you, right? But what we do is, we do take the time doing our citizen or council comments to talk about the stuff that you brought up at your three minutes or the emails. So, you know, we take that time to talk about it then. So at very least, stay for us to address you. I found it very cowardly for some people who come here to talk bad about the city and their three minutes and then dick. Then they go on the Facebook page, they didn't talk about us. But like all of us, we'll stay at the end of our meeting and reach out to those who have, you know, brought up some concerns that we can't address right away. Our staff is present, our police is always present. So it does me no favor by saying your three minutes and go on your soapbox on Facebook and then worried about, oh, I'm gonna say it again. No, stay here and listen to what we got to say. And we can have a dialect and we can have a discussion about your issues. Okay, sir. It's back to, to what I was gonna say. As far as Mr. South's comments, staff did hear about the, the issues as far as having stop signs in the area. So please, please look into that. Thunder in the Square, I was there, it was great. A lot of people there, cars always fantastic. Shout out to Brittany and Leah for doing an amazing job with promoting that event as well as all downtown events. We have a whole dedicated Facebook page, Downtown Hagerstown. That does fabulous job of making sure people are aware of what's happening in our city. Shameless plug to my girl in the back. And as far as rent control, we had one discussion. And the topic was rent stabilization, which again is a goal for this body. Our goals are published, we make it very known. This body agreed to rent stabilization and looking into the pros and cons. And that's what we're going to do. That one discussion has kind of, you know, stirred a pot a little bit. And I am hearing a lot more from the landlords that are so against it. And I want to be very clear about how people and their messaging, how it works, right? Those who are in favor of evaluating what rent stabilization looks like, use the term civilization. Those who are absolutely opposed to the idea of having affordable housing, use the word control. So keep that in mind when you see people online in the street, you know, talking about rent control this. Really listen to what they're saying. All I'm asking is that we look to, for the pros and cons of what that looks like for landlords, yes, and for the tenants. So what I'm proposing is that we do a town hall to hear from everyone. Have a town hall for the tenants, have a town hall for landlords. And of course, make it public so everybody's aware, they have their voices be heard in a very conducive, respectful forum. And Zoe Burnett, I want to thank you for your advocacy. You are a true product of your mother and father. I commend your bravery. I commend you coming up here and speaking to this body more than once. It takes a lot of courage and I wish at 16, I had the ambition that you have. With that said, I would be in favor of looking at the logistics of what voting looks like for 16 and 17 years at Hagerstown. I, I was not present at the work session when you did come. But I would be in favor of hearing from the board of elections, hearing the backstory of, of when this was possibly proposed in the past, how much it costs and what cycle that would mean. I would, I would be in favor of hearing the logistics. I am not a no for vote six, for vote 16. I want to hear more about it, okay? And again, shout out to your mom for making sure that you have the support that you need to make sure that your voice is heard. And I think I talked a lot. So I'm just gonna just end on, thank you, former mayor, for being present. I've never heard you speak so short within your three plus four minutes. But I, I appreciate your spirit and I appreciate those who came in support of all the things that's happening in our town. It's hard, it's hard being in these seats, but when you have a good foundation around you, it makes it worth, this, this work more worth it. And I won't apologize for going off script today because my cousin told me when I do this, it's the spirit, the Holy Spirit. So with that, thank you.
Same here, I might go off script a little bit too. I want to address citizen comments as well. I would encourage everyone to please, please probably practice at home or something to keep it at three minutes. I've asked, I've asked, I've asked to keep it at three minutes and we can't. You, you can have a little peripheral vision and see the screen right off to the side there. And if you see 30 seconds, please figure out the way to wrap it up. We're giving everybody three, uh, three minutes and I, I really am going to, the, the next one, we're gonna stick with it. While I, while I do believe in free speech, I do not believe in attacking anybody personally. I believe in attacking policies. If you, if you have a disagreement with a policy, let's keep it, let's keep it at that and not attack people personally. Second thing I want to talk about is, I want to, somebody mentioned, I think, former mayor just mentioned it, that the Gatekeepers Gala on October 23rd is going to, you know, celebrate a, a great man in this community that started something with gatekeepers. And it's a, it, it's a great thing. And I would encourage everybody to get online, maybe talk to Keisha or anybody how to click on the website and get a ticket for this. I think they're, are they selling pretty quick? Okay, I would, I would encourage everybody to do that. I would like to give a shout out also to Brittany and Leah. We do a great job, I think, of advertising all the events here. We, the Thunder in the Square, there was signs right, right on the square for probably a month prior. Also, Facebook, every avenue that we can advertise, other than flying a airplane over the city with a banner attached to the back. I think we're, we're covering all the bases on, on advertising. The last thing I want to talk about is, I would like is Director Parks and Rec, you're still here, Eric Dikey. Can you come up to the podium real quick? I want to, I, I just want you to back me up on this. And we, we, the trash issue. There is a lot of things floating around on Facebook. There's a lot of people that have grown Facebook muscles and trashing the city a little bit on, on trash pickup. I'm the understanding that anything on city property, we can pick the trash up. And actually, we also supply bags, gloves, as well as pickup sticks as well. But anything on personal property, we will not pick up. So can you elaborate on that?
Sure. For all the years I've worked here, it's delivered 26. There's been many volunteer groups and individuals and civic groups and church groups. You name them that have volunteered their time to pick up trash. A lot of times a public property or cleaning band team creek, whatever it is. We absolutely provide bags. We're welcome, or more than happy to do that. Gloves, if you work in the street, we'll give you vests, let you borrow vests, the trash collector, picker upper, what you've said. If you clean up public right of ways, that sort of thing, we'll absolutely pick that up. When you're cleaning up private property, there's a process in place in which code can, you know, if you're cleaning up somebody's private property, whether they want it or not, no, we typically will not pick up that trash. We want the private property owners to be responsible for their property. And so if we just go pick it up or speak, collect set, we collect and pick it up for them, the private property owner just encourages them to just continue doing the same old, same old and putting more trash out. But we're more than happy to pick up the trash in public places and plenty, plenty of streets and public places and right of ways which can be cleaned up and we're happy to help with that.
Okay, just want to make sure that's known, that that's what, that's what we do. We do help. I've personally had, personally have delivered gloves, bags and everything picked up from, from public work. So I just want to make, make that clear to everyone out there that, yeah.
Yeah, and we're partners with the Reach Show, which does the Bridge Change, which is probably going on, I don't know, five or six years now. Provide all the trash bags to them. They let us, they're picking up trash three to four days a week. And so they do a fantastic job. They hire the homeless, give them, you know, pay them a wage to, to collect that trash. And we go around and collect for them, provide the bags, provide the picker uppers, that sort of thing. We have two street sweepers that run five days a week. We collect between 350 to 400 tons of trash and debris every year. So we're on it. It's just, there's just, there's more people throwing trash and there isn't enough people to actually collect it on. But we're, we're here to help.
So see, we do help, right?
We do.
Absolutely.
Yes, sir.
I appreciate, one last thing, I want to address the group with skateboard. We, unfortunately, our parks aren't open 24/7. We close the whole parks down at what time?
30 minutes after dusk.
After dusk, okay.
So it changes through the year. So obviously, the, the hours that you can be in the parks right now continues to close down worse as daylight, you know, ends. And there's a reason for that. There's a lot of things that happen in the parks. We don't have park guards that ride the parks 24/7. And I would say that if we encourage one group to be in there at all hours, all it does is encourage all groups to be in there at all hours. And that's, that's the issue. Then everybody else says, well, if they get special treatment, why can't I be in there for after hours? And unfortunately, it only takes one person to ruin it for everybody else.
Right.
And so that might be 100 people, there's good intentions. All it takes is one person with bad intentions. And unfortunately, we have a few people that have bad intentions.
All right, I appreciate it, Eric.
Yes, sir.
And listen, I'm, I, I 100% agree with you guys and what you were talking about, how that's a great outlet. But I just wanted to address that we, we, our parks aren't even a city park. Every park that we have closes 30 minutes after dusk.
Right, and none of the, none of the parks are fenced. So it's, it's hard to control that.
Right.
There's absolute people in our parks 24/7, there is. There's not much we can really do about that. But, you know, if you're there 1:00 in the morning, I won't be there to run you out, I can tell you that.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Appreciate it. One other, one other thing, I got an opportunity yesterday to talk to second graders at Paramount Elementary School. There were six different classes. We split it up into two different timeframes. They had some great questions and some of the questions were, what kind of dog do I have? It ranged from, what's, what's the hardest part about being mayor? And, you know, I, I answered it honestly. I said probably hearing criticism about myself. But then going and listening to the, the other things, my favorite color, you know, do it, do you live in a mayor's mansion? There was all kinds of great things. So it was a one, it was a wonderful setting to, to listen to those, those young kids. It was great. With that, I'd like to get a motion to adjourn. I got a second. Discussion on the audience tonight. Okay, adjourn.